Plug it in.
Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and get started. We want to excuse Ryan Hill tonight. Today is actually Thursday, April third, and this is a work meeting for Hooper City Council. We are happy to have Debbie Marigoni, Councilmember Debbie Marigoni, and Councilmember Bryce Wilcox with us on Zoom. So, and I think we should have hopefully Dale and Lisa joining us here shortly. So, first off, and you can hear us alright Debbie and Bryce?
Yes, I can hear you great.
Okay, Debbie, can you hear us alright?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to start off, we have Lieutenant Slater here with us tonight. He's going to talk to us about an issue that we have going on in Hooper, and it's on the agenda tonight as far as a draft with our motorized vehicles, and so I'm just going to turn the time to you, and if you have questions, just ask as we go along and we'll have a discussion.
Cool. So, this is really just some follow-up on the last council meeting, I think it was, when there was a discussion about the use of motorcycles. I know there was one piece of land for the city. We talked about that, and then just the trails, there's kind of a combination of things going. So, I went out, looked at some of the signage, there is a no trespassing sign, I believe, that's on the fifty-one hundred south, fifty-five hundred west property. That should be easy enough to enforce the no trespassing there. But as I started looking at the other sections of the trail, you know, down on the west side of it, we're having problems with kids on the motorbikes as well. From an enforcement standpoint, the intent of the sign, I believe, is to make no motorized vehicles. But as we look at it now, we have e-bikes and scooters and motorized skateboards and things like that, and so I came out, met with the staff last Tuesday, just kind of talked about a few things. But looking through the city ordinances, it makes sense to me and maybe get the guidance of the council to just put some drafting ordinance, if you will, looking, I did some, a little bit of research on some of the neighboring cities, not even neighboring, but other cities inside the the council, or, sorry, I was looking at Dale. Other cities inside the county that the sheriff's office services, and you know, Far West has an ordinance of what's applicable for use of the trails and the parks, and kind of go on that route. So, if we do get a motorcycle inside of a park, they're not supposed to be there, but it would help the enforcement standpoint of having something there to help us enforce that. And so, kind of a bigger project of, you know, I, I brought some stuff from Far West. Hooper does have an ordinance regarding the use of ATV on public streets. So, you know, maybe with some assistance with the attorneys that we draft, get an ordinance drafted up. So, that's kind of started out small being one issue, and, and I think the city can address that with the no trespassing, you know, sign it. I, I don't believe that requires everything, but putting no trespassing signs in like the, let me go back, with the ordinance, if we drafted, of what appropriate use is of a park or a retention pond, or those kinds of things, then our signage would just need to probably be a little bit changed, because my understanding is that one of the concerns is there's a retention pond, and if it's inside of a subdivision and kids are riding in that, and we post a no trespassing, the dad that wants to take his kids over and play kickball, it's, nobody's allowed. So, my opinion from an enforcement standpoint is if the city was to look at it in, in ordinance and build that out a little bit. Far West, you know, just using them as the example, they have an appropriate use of parks, and then they have the Smith Family Park, which is over there by Smith and Edwards that has the horse arena and that kind of stuff, and so they amended their ordinance to specific for that park only, because there's only things that pertain to that park, right? So, just as we look forward and move forward on enforcement, the biggest thing for me is if we're dealing with kids on a motorcycle and we get the, a doll or a parent on an e-bike come whizin' past us, what's the city's stance? You know, the sign currently says no motorized vehicles. What does the city want us to do as far as enforce that? And so, I don't think that you guys want to restrict the use of e-bikes on a trail, but when we met with, when I met with the staff, Jared had found an ordinance that West Point had that talked about if it had pedals and, you know, some of those things that, it may be assisted, but, so anyway, just as we kind of move forward, like, this problem is not just subject to Hooper, it's across the state of Utah. Once the state allowed off, or ATVs and off-highway vehicles on high, on roads, like, it's created a lot of muddy water, so. We can, we can enforce things, there is a state statute that currently allows us to use ATV, or that limits the use of ATVs and motorcycles on public lands. So, we do have a statute now, but it's kind of a complex issue, it started out to be that piece of city ground, and then kind of turned into some trails, so. This is, we kind of, in that thirty thousand foot view, it would help us, help the city enforce what they want used, so.
Hey Lieutenant, isn't there a, some of the cities with like the e-bikes, like a certain voltage or wattage that they can put on it too? Because I know like, you've got, if you go down here to Jones', they've got some electric bikes that'll just scream.
Yeah, I mean, the vacuum bikes, obviously, please, their bicycle team uses them, they'll go thirty miles an hour. So, there are some restrictions, I arguably don't have, I'm not the resident expert on e-bikes, but there are some that if they have a pedal, then they're okay. There is a motorcycle that's electric that isn't classified as a motorcycle, but it's not an e-bike. So, there's some, there's some various definitions that, you know, just trying to get ahead of the issue and that we're, as we move forward from here, I think it'll help the city and help us with some enforcement, so. And as I looked through Hooper's ordinance, I couldn't find anything like unappropriate use of parks, hours, things like that. I could have missed it arguably, but, so that's kind of from that big overview. Like, as we enforce hours on parks, it is signed, which we're good with, but are we citing under a city ordinance, or are we citing under a state law? Are they trespassing at that point? Like, so, my point is from law enforcement, with working with the city attorney to help kind of clarify and clean some of that up to where if somebody ever did raise an issue, we are backed, have some teeth behind it.
So, a couple of things we talked about in our staff meeting. So, because this was turned into the state, did, I can't remember if we talked about that in our last city council meeting. Did we, were we already aware of that? Do you remember us talking about that?
I think that happened in between council meeting and-
Okay, so, because the place where they have built these jump hills actually borders a slough, we have an issue now with our waterway because the, um, the state actually controls the water within that with the storm.
Yeah, that's, that's like a hundred-foot easement, yeah.
So, they, someone turned us into the state, the state has been in contact with us now, and so now there is a permit that we have to get from the state in order for us to even be able to knock down those hills. Malcolm and I went and looked at them, and we kind of walked the neighborhood, we found the home where they are the ones building, the, and we went up and told them that we are going to be knocking these down, because one concern that Jared has is we knock them down, but then do they come up with their equipment and build them back up? But the person that we need to get in contact with in order to get that permit, his father just recently passed away, and so he hasn't been in the office with the last few days for Jared to be able to get ahold of him. One thing we've talked about, we talked about in staff meeting, we did tell them we're going to be knocking them down, so as soon as possible, we would like to do that. Because you never like to make idle threats as a city, we're going to come knock these down. We talked to a few other, there were some children out there, they really like them, understandably, it's really a fun thing, but still, they can't be doing them. In the newsletter that's going to be coming out next week, Jared actually wrote up something that we have put in the, we're going to put in the newsletter if you are agreeable with the city council, but it, he, it just is titled, "Hooper residents, we need your help," and I won't read all of it to you, but it talks about motorized vehicles being used on public property that are not designated. And then he goes on to say, "Transportation with mechanically aided propulsion," that's the definition that Jared came up with. "Including motorcycles, scooters, assisted bikes, go-karts, four-wheelers, three-wheelers, ATVs, and UTVs, mo, snowmobiles, et cetera." And then it just says how it's prohibited to use these on any city-owned property, parks, trails, detention basins, fields, et cetera. So, you know, again, they're just asking, saying if, would you please either report that to us or to the sheriff department, so.
So, that would include e-bikes, right? Wait, any, anyway, any type of motor or engine, yeah.
Mechanically aided propulsion. And we talked about it in staff meeting, because they say sometimes e-bikes can get going pretty fast. And one of the neighbors we talked to that, as we went, you know, kind of from house to house and say, just so you know, we're going to come knocking these down. She said they've had some real problems now with other children in the neighborhood being terrorized by these kids on the motorcycles. Like even a little five-year-old that, you know, they raced right up next to her and then screeched on their brake. Anyway, they said it's a problem. So, we, so we understand, they like this, they enjoy this, they want somewhere. And I don't know if I mentioned to this, I can't remember when, what we brought up in the last city council meeting, but when I called and talked to our insurance about it, they said absolutely not, this cannot be permitted, and I asked them if there was any way that we could do on city-owned property, the city could make their own, then that we could have insured, and he said absolutely not. Because he said the problem is, then how do you know that the jumps are wide enough, there's not going to be any problems? How do we make this safe enough that there's not going to be a problem? And, you know, it's gone, it's gotten a little bit colder, but as soon as it's warm weather, they're going to be out there wanting, again, to ride on them. So, we thought we could have a discussion with the Lieutenant Slater here, and then you'll see again on our agenda, a discussion and a motion if we would like our attorneys to propose an ordinance to stating some of these things that Lieutenant Slater has mentioned.
It would help us clarify the city's stance on what they want enforced. So, and again, it's not just a problem to Hooper, it's kind of everything, and I think it makes sense why we're doing it, you know, there are trails, you could, you guys could add in some park stuff, you know, define park use and so forth.
Lieutenant Slater, I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, I, I support what we're doing a hundred percent, I think something needs to be done. Is there a way? Because I do know a lot of people that use the trails and e-bikes, and most of them are, you know, older than me, which does not go out, anyway. Is there a way to put like maybe if the e-bikes are okay, uh, to put a speed limit, like they can't go over, I don't know, ten mile, fifteen miles an hour or something like that, just to keep it safe? Because I hate to cut everybody off, obviously, the, you know, gas-propelled and electric, you know, motorcycles that are are high-speed or, or, are dangerous to everybody, especially if you're walking out there and he comes up and by it. You know, you, you don't hear them, and you get in their pathway and run you over somewhere. Does the, you know, are you seeing that in other cities by chance?
From an, from an enforcement standpoint, it's almost going to be impossible unless you're sitting out there with a radar gun.
Right.
So, if you get a complaint with somebody on an e-bike, could it be done as far, I mean, the speed issue, down on the west portion of the trail that's between fifty-nine hundred west and sixty-three hundred? There are, what, a couple curves through there, but, I mean, there are some straightaways. So, I don't know that we're going to see a ton of speed, you could get it in certain areas, but it's going to be those areas that we're, from an enforcement standpoint, it's going to be almost impossible for us. And to restrict an e-bike, or to talk about was it mechanically used, or was the battery operational during the, that portion, like, it really, it, I mean, I think a generalized statement that e-bikes are appropriate are probably going to be good, but when I came out and talked to the staff, when we are dealing, you know, let's just put the what-if, if we're dealing with the kid on the motorcycle, which is what the intent of the signs are right now, that they're not supposed to be on the trail, and we do have that e-bike come by, kind of shoots our case with the no motorized vehicles, because a motor is a motor, whether it's electric or gas-powered. So, you know, my nieces and nephews have some tiny little scooters that are about this tall, that are, you know, six, eight years old, and so if mom and dad are walking with them and they're on their little scooters, is that appropriate? Technically, it's a motor, right? Like, I'm, I'm getting, I know I'm pretty analytical on that, but I would like, it just, we know what the intent of the sign is, it just makes it difficult that-
It's just going to take some thought, you know, to really work something like this out, because it is different than it was years ago.
Yeah.
With, because of e-bikes and all the
Yeah.
electric kind of stuff that are kind of toys, but yet they're,
Yeah.
they're somewhere in between a toy and a real motorcycle.
Yeah, and so then you take an e-bike and you put it down at the city park during Tomato Days. Is that appropriate? Pro, you know what I mean? And so, just, that's where I think if we kind of define just park rules, what's appropriate, what's not, if we have that in an ordinance, it really gives us teeth to help move people along. Otherwise, from an enforcement standpoint, like, we have to do all or the other, so no motorized vehicles means nothing with a motor.
Yeah, right.
Well, another issue too on both of the trails, so you have the one that's around Hooper Landings, and then you have the one you're referring to between fifty-nine and sixty-three. Both of them have a couple of entrances onto the trail from a road. I mean, there's a little bit, but there's a road, and then there's a trail that cuts through houses. That was another thing the mother expressed concern. So, someone comes off the road, like an e-bike or a motorcycle, they come down the trail. You have a mother walking with a stroller with kids.
Yeah.
By the time they see it, be, because I think there's, I can think of Hooper Landings for sure, there's two, and I think, and I can think of two down at the other one as well.
Yeah, so that, and it, they just specify no motorized vehicles. There's actually at every entrance of Hooper Landings, there is a sign at every, at every trailhead, if you will, right? And so, it does specify no motorized vehicles, but again, that's pretty broad in general, and so arguably, you know, to Bryce's point, you try to put a speed limit on it, do you, you know, what do you do that way? I think that, I'm not an attorney, so, but drafting some language, I think with the attorneys, I think we can do to suffice our enforcement point and make sure that we're not infringing on the citizens' rights to use the city land.
So, I have one more, one more comment. Obviously, it's going to be an educational curve, you know, we're just going to have to educate everybody, and unfortunately, probably some people are going to get some tickets or whatever. However, say if someone has an e-bike, and they're going, you know, out to animal pile, wherever they're going to go, they're going to go south, they're going to access our trail system in one way or another, can they use an e-bike without, you know, like just using the pedals to get through, through there? I know that's kind of a can of worms, but if they're not using the motor, is that's an alternative we could look at? Or is that going to give you guys all kinds of problems?
You know, Bryce, I can kind of answer that, since I actually have an e-bike, there'd be no way to know that. That there, there's no way to know if their pedaling's being assisted or not.
Yeah.
Especially at the time of the violation, right? Which, we may be able to be there when it is occurring and catch them in the act, but if we're, if it's a third-party report from a citizen or a witness that is then reporting it to us, essentially, they, you know, they have to prove that that was a violation of the ordinance, or, so, really, yeah, I don't have an answer for it, but-
No, no, I think it's a tough, I think it's really hard.
We just don't want to be citing people, and I talked with Brandon a little bit from the prosecution side of if we do, are addressing that motorcycle, right, and we do have that e-bike, it really just kind of shoots our motorcycle case in the foot if we don't cite both. So, the optics of it, so.
Well, and understandably, you always have the respectful ones that aren't causing problems, but you can't have a role just for the non-respectful ones.
Yeah, we have, we have to be fair, right, and across the board, and so, although law enforcement does have some discretion, it's you know, it really comes back to when that person's trying to defend their case with the motorcycle, that we weren't fair and equal because we didn't address the person that drove past, you know, past the deputies while they were dealing with the kids, so. Again, it sounds like I'm kind of making a mountain out of a molehill, but-
That's reality.
It is, yeah, it's enforced, it's enforced, it's a tough one to enforce, that's all there is to it.
And Hooper's not the only city in the state, so, that is dealing with this by any shape or form, it's just, and it comes back to like, if people are doing the right thing, they're never going to get called. If they're on an e-bike, they're on a motorized skateboard, right? But it's, when it becomes a problem, how do we address it? What do we want addressed, and-
In fact, now you just brought up a whole nother thing, those skateboards with motors on them, those things are, they're pretty fast, you know, they'll go-
Thirty miles an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but as the weather started to get nice, and, you know, I told the mayor, I'm like, hmm, probably could have had a conversation about this five years ago, everyone, like Marion Slatorville doesn't have anything, West Haven doesn't have anything. But I would like to see Hooper get some rules for the parks, and, you know, kind of explore some of that as well as we're addressing the trails, because I think I was in, when the council assignments, it was a parks, trails, kind of a group thing, so in my head, it was like, as we address this, I think it's a perfect opportunity to kind of, if we're going to create an ordinance and go through the work, let's put more than just the trail motorcycle e-bike thing, right? Because then I moved the e-bike to Hooper, or to Tomato Days, and you got somebody riding around in the park, is that appropriate, is it not? So, I would say no, but-
Well, the chances of someone getting hurt is pretty high. I mean, they won't run over somebody.
No.
You know, that's, it's pretty, it's, it's, it'll likely happen at some point.
So, Lieutenant, can I ask a question? If you, so if you come up with park rules, you know, obviously, you've got to have the signs, right?
Yeah.
That you don't have to post all the rules, could you hang a sign with like a QR code so that anybody with a smartphone can scan it, it takes them to the city's website directly to that ordinance, so they can see exactly what the park rules are? Does that satisfy requirements of posting?
Uh, is Brandon online?
No, he's not.
I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, it was a good question.
Yeah, it was a good question. I mean, it's, I think it's a great idea.
If you use a QR code.
Yeah, a QR code, or even, you know, the web, the city's website, that, who doesn't, I mean, everybody's got a smartphone now, or their kid does, so they can see,
Yeah.
and it takes them right to the city park rules. And you can do it for every trail, every park, and it can be different if needed to be, but-
Well, that's even one thing about the no trespassing signs, because as we talked about in staff meetings, so we put, because we had some kids that were riding a four-wheeler up on top of the dirt hill out here.
Yeah.
Well, we can't put no trespassing because that's a par.
Yeah, I mean, you can't even walk it.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't put no trespassing on our trails because we want our residents choosing them.
Yeah, so like the, a no unauthorized use, you know, we talked about retention ponds that are grassy inside of a subdivision, right? If we post no trust, no trespassing, then that means nobody can use it.
You can't kick a ball in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just as we kind of look at, you know, getting new signs and kind of moving forward, what is, what is appropriate use, and I think it, you know, in my simple head is no unauthorized use, or authorized use only, and then you maybe do have the QR code that-
Full list of park rules, scan here.
So.
And a mother with a child probably would QR code a kid racing by on his motorcycle, probably won't-
Well, you know, when you were talking about like the T-intersections coming through the landings, have you ever heard of defensive architecture? So, it's something we use, like, I think downtown Salt Lake where you get a lot of people hanging on your flower beds looking at the hay labor. So, you yank out the grass and put in rocks. You can do on those trailheads coming in, you place just one rock on one side, so you still got your AD requirements, but it slows that traffic. You get onto the main trail, so those kids hauling butt on the bikes would have to slow down, so. Defensive architecture, or hostile architecture, I like the first one better.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this, I printed them off and I can't remember. Like, here's, I believe this is West Haven's. Yeah, they've defined a motor vehicle to be a motorcycle, a motorbike, a snowmobile, and any other self-propelled mechanical vehicles. So, anyway, there's, you know, I think there's some things we can copy and, city can copy and paste and look at of what some of the other cities around have done, but, yeah, there's, I couldn't find anything in Hooper's ordinance as far as park hours, and, you know, so, it kind of brings up like, it is signed, I believe, down there, park closes at ten o'clock, but if somebody really wanted to step up and where did that rule come from? You know, there's, who, who hung the sign, and, you know, depending on the severity of the case, for us, if it's a big felony case or something, right, like, that's where those things are really going to be challenged in court, so.
How do you feel, city council, about what I've read about Jared in our newsletter? We're hoping to have that go out the first of next week. Are you alright? With that, any comments?
I, I think it sounds fine.
Okay.
Do you want to read it one more time?
Yeah, yeah, I should have, I'm sorry, I should have made you copies. I mean, it's, I'll just kind of, maybe the main, it just, the headline is "Hooper residents, we need your help," and it just says, "We have a growing number of problems with motorized vehicles being used on public property that are not designated for motorized vehicle use," and then it just has another thing about costing things to repair, which it is with our detention. But then the part that he, he calls them mechanically aided propulsion, including motorcycles, scooters, assisted bikes, go-karts, four-wheelers, three-wheelers, ATVs, and UTVs, snowmobiles, et cetera. And, well, and then he also fits in here, I thought, which was good too, that says, "Many of these motorized vehicles are operated by minors with no driver's license and are unregistered and uninsured. There are many concerns associated with this issue, liability, safety, property damage, erosion. So, any vehicle operated on a public street must comply with the state code." And then, again, just it is prohibited to use motor hy, motorized vehicles on any city-owned property, parks, trails, detention basins, fields, et cetera.
Okay, so that does cover every, any city-owned property.
And, any city-owned.
Any, so I think that's,
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, any city-owned property, parks, trails, detention basins, fields, et cetera. He said apart from licensed vehicles on streets and parking lots, of course.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but he, but they, he does, oh, go ahead, Bryce.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, he just-
Did it say, did it say trails in there as well?
It does.
Any city-owned property.
Okay, parks, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and he just said any person caught oper, operating a motorized vehicle on city property where motorized vehicles are prohibited will be subject to fines, vehicle impoundment, and could be held liable for damages to property and injury.
Yeah.
We have quite a bit of property damage that is occurring in our detention basins, and also on, in our parks. So, this, at the other night, I don't know if this had occurred before our last city council meeting, the, um, the lieutenant that came out actually had the kids go back and get a room and sweep off the pickleball courts, because what they were doing is they were doing donuts as close as they could to the pickleball courts, spraying dirt on the pickleball courts.
I saw the gravel on the driveway going into the public works, and I wondered how, how did that get spread, and that's probably what they did. Got a motorcycle in the gravel and
Yeah.
kick it out on, so.
So, I thought that was good, you know?
Yeah, sure.
He stopped and said, we, gives you a ticket, what do we do? And I said, well, they at least need to take care of what they've done, because there were kids that were playing pickleball, that they were actually spraying the dirt on. Take care of what they've done, because there were kids that were playing pickleball, that they were actually spraying the dirt on.
Hmm. And so that's where, I mean, even as you guys look at creation of a sign at a park, right? If there's scout projects or, you know, things like that that can be done, that's something that the city can then look at and, you know. Get some nice signs with the park rules listed or so forth. You know, there's ideas to further it on.
So, I, I, I like what Jared put together, um, I still would like to. See if, uh, there's a way, cause you don't wanna penalize, you know, I, you know, I, I know, like I said, I know a lot of people that use the trails with electric bikes, um. Penalize them because they're just going to a destination. I know there's different styles of e-bikes, like different classifications and that, but I, I, obviously, we have to do something, but I, I still like to. You know, I, I'm okay with that, we're going out, but. See if we can come out with some provision for those law-abiding citizens that use those trails, um. You know, with their, with their bikes, so, anyway, that's just my thought, that's the only thing that kinda. Concerns me a little bit, but other than that, I think that's great.
And the, and that the attorney, I think motorbike and motor assisted bike, I think there's a definition in state law, I just realized I didn't bring my internet in, so.
And that doesn't prohibit bikes, a pet, a regular pedal bike, so.
No, it, no.
It just has to be assisted, so, alright.
Yeah, well, and, and really. Probably the people that are just nicely riding along probably no one even notices or complains or cares. Usually it's the ones that are racing through, aren't following what we would want them to do. So, I, because when I think about what you're, I think even Bryce, like you're talking about our trail that goes along the. West side of the road down fifty-five hundred west, it starts at about fifty-three hundred south. People that were on there probably aren't the ones that are, the same ones that are racing through the detention ponds.
No, we just, from an enforcement standpoint, it would be great to have some guidance because. There are people recreating and using the trails on a daily basis and that the city never hears about, we never hear about.
Yeah.
Uh, but when it is a problem. Being able to address it appropriately, I think.
Can I add my two bits?
Sure.
I'm a bike rider. I don't think electric bikes should be on. Trails where people are jogging and walking. It's terribly dangerous, I've seen it happen a lot. In riding my, my pedal bike.
Yeah. And like we said, some of them get going pretty fast.
They can go thirty miles an hour.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, any other comments on this? So be thinking, you know, this is our last thing on our agenda tonight. What, I mean, not that we have to come up with everything, because if you make a motion and want to do. A proposal to draft an ordinance, then we would certainly get with Brandon. You know, we can give him any information that you have, Lieutenant Slater, we appreciate all your research on this and. The, the problem is, you know, you either prevent it or you wait till something happens and then you have a problem. So anything we can do to prevent something from happening, because if it keeps going on the way it is. Probably there will end up with somebody being injured, and then, then it's almost too late, and so I'm always one that says, let's do some kind of prevention first. Before, so. Okay.
Thank you, Lieutenant, that was very important, thank you.
Anything else you'd like to address with us on that?
Nope, no, I think just, uh, I'm gonna go back, well, I guess, yes, one thing is, uh. Some of these others address the smoking in the parks. So if we have an issue with that, say at Hooper Days, we have the state law that backs it up, but. Just being able, you know, it is an outdoor space and. If they're X amount of feet away from people, you know what I mean, so just, I think going kinda back and encompassing those park rules.
So Hooper City, before the state even passed it, before Weaver County even passed it, we're talking back with Mayor Barrow.
Yeah.
Actually passed something prohibiting smoking in outdoor, our outdoor parks.
Yeah.
I, so we can maybe look that up, I know, I know it was during Mayor Barrow's time.
Okay, and like I say, I may have missed it.
And it might've just been a resolution, maybe not an ordinance, that maybe could be, give it a little more teeth if it was an ordinance.
Well, it gives a, a person the place to go find it, right?
I think there's some signs up even too.
There is.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then Weaver County passed it, then the state passed it, cause it used to be, you couldn't smoke in public buildings and then it was an outdoor.
And, and that's going back to if the county has an ordinance, we can use the county ordinance. But again, it's just, as we cite, we can cite under.
Yeah.
City ordinance, it really helps.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, um, if nothing else on that, then, let's go on then to, um, things, discussion on agenda items or city council assignments. Anything you would like to bring up, discuss on any of these. Things on the agenda or anything to do with any of our city council assignments? Okay?
The one thing, the one thing our, um, city council has, I thought you were talking. Always thinking of the A's on, and then that's the thing, and Morgan said he had it differently, so. Um, was there something else that I used to do, or I, I got kinda confused with all of that?
Are you talking about as far as litigation, Debbie?
No, just, um, just, uh, the. The, uh, being, being, the, the person that's trying to work between that and stuff. Are we talking about the assignments for the city council?
Oh, I, just if you, yes, just if you had anything concerning any of your assignments that you wanted to report to us.
No, I, 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 I don't have anything on my agenda, I, I just was confused about that one, and it's, it's.
Okay, there, there's a couple of things then I wanted, um, ask about, so. One thing that with our utility billing, we have a lot of residents every month that we end up. Putting, um, late notices and shut-off notices, and one thing that we have talked about that we, as staff. And so we wanted to bring up to city council is if you are agreeable to have someone like Bonneville Collections. That we could turn our collections into, one thing with Bonneville Collections and Monica Barnes, our. Utility clerk that does all of these, how this works with Bonneville Collections is they actually charge the additional amount. Would be added to their account, so there would not be a cost to the city. So if it's a three percent, I don't remember, I'm sure it's in here, percent that they end up charging, they charge that to the resident. And then, so we are not the ones that end up paying that to them. And so Monica wanted me to ask if you would be agreeable to be able to do that, if we are. So it says the collection fee percentage you can add is thirty-three point thirty-three, anyway, it's point three-three percent to get the collection fee amount. But one thing then, we would want to, at the bottom of our forms, when people come in to sign. Is there's actually something on there, like, for instance, if someone new is coming in, that would say that we have that ability to be able to do that. Right now, we, it does have verbiage along the lines of we can end up shutting off their water, there can be collections. But she would like to maybe make it a little more specific on the bottom of the forms to be able to do that, and when we say. Collections, we have. How many would you even guess?
A hundred, two hundred?
Yeah.
A hundred?
Couple of hundred residents that every time, and they don't do shut-off notices every, every month, I believe it's every other month. And they do wait until people are far enough past due on their bills, so it's not like you've missed one month that they would do this. She has a certain amount, and I believe you probably have missed several months. We, because we cannot turn off sewer, there is an agreement with Hooper Water. That they can shut off your water if you get so far past due.
That's culinary water, right?
They shut up culinary water, mhm. So, any thoughts on this? Um, you know, again, we've talked about this a couple of months now in staff meeting. We feel like there's really something we need to do, and we probably have thousands, and I know sometimes in the past they were just written off. But we would like to try something else before every month we're just, or at the end of the year, we're just writing off bad debt. So, any, any thoughts on that? Um, she thought, when Monica called, she felt pretty good about Bonneville Collections, yes, Bryce?
So, did you say you had a hundred a month, is that what you said, Morgan?
No, it's, we do notices or shut-offs every quarter, but there's. A pretty big stack of those people that don't, or need that notice. There is legally, you can't shut off water or do anything to their home if they've made some sort of payment. But they only pay like ten, fifteen bucks and they get out of that. So, it's getting to the point where they're. Six, seven, eight hundred dollars past due, but there's nothing we can do, cause they're paying at least ten dollars a month.
No, wow. So you've got quite a bit of time fiddling with this stuff, it sounds like.
Yeah.
There, there really is, and we've talked to Brandon, Monica and I have talked to Brandon, and when it gets to a certain point. Like he said, what if we do a thousand dollars, is there, then we, we'd actually have Brandon. Then he could do some kind of legal action, we have one that's considerably more than that. But what, we're again, we're just trying to maybe prevent that from happening, if Monica could, you know, after say, okay, we're gonna send you to collection, sometimes that's enough to. You would think to shutting off water, but, but we think this would be a good idea, you know, um, I know Monica's done quite a bit of research and she. Feels like this would be something really good if we could, it is a collection agreement that we would sign with Bonneville. And then Monica would be the one that would end up dealing with this.
What type of dollar amount are we talking as written off for bad debt, yes?
Or do we ever do that? We don't ever write off bad debt, do we?
We did, I, I remember back when I was here working in the office, when we, back when it was our other financial manager, we wrote off so much bad debt every year. I remember her talking about that, that there was bad debt.
Number?
I, I don't have a number, no.
Like if it's under a thousand or?
It, it would be, yeah, it would be, it would be thousands if we did it, because I, I can think of a couple right now. That we're working with Brandon on that owe us more than a thousand dollars. And like I say, I, I think it's three or four hundred, I don't remember now, before we ever even do the shut-off.
Yeah, so we send like a late notice every other month, um, once they're two, three months past due. And then that following month, if they don't make any payment, then we send another notice saying, if there's no payment, we'll shut your water off. You have a week to pay that, once that week comes and there's still no payment, that's when we contact Hooper Water and make that.
But you were saying, even if they come in and pay ten bucks, you can't, why not?
Yeah.
So maybe that's what we better look at.
If they make some sort of payment to their bill, you legally can't. Do anything on the.
No, but you can still tend to send them to collections.
We could still send them to collections, and I know.
But what does that, what, see, so I'm a little confused with that, if we can't. Collect it if they're playing, paying so much, how can a collection agency do that, see, is that something we need to get a little more information on? A little better understanding?
One thing that happens with, with collections is it starts to deem their credit. People, people would sooner not have something be at a collection agency that's deeming their credit, because then anytime they go to apply for anything that's on there. We don't have that ability now to do that. So we can say you haven't paid, but, but, but we, the only thing we have holding over them is like I mentioned, when it gets to be like a thousand dollars. Then we turn it over to Brandon, and then Brandon then can either, there's a couple of things, he can send them a letter, he can try to put a lien on their house. You know, we could take him to small claims court, but Bonneville, and you know, and there's not, like, we don't have to pay a fee, it's not like we have to sign up and say. We can try it, that's why we thought if we could try it, if we don't think it works and we can, we don't have to do it. But maybe if it would help even get any of these that aren't. Paying, and there's a lot, and another thing too, Monica is very patient and she'll work out payment agreements with people. They will come in and fill out a payment agreement, and then like, Morgan said, they, they don't stick to it, no.
If we don't have to sign a contract with them and it's just kind of a trial thing, I, I don't have a problem with it.
This is something that we ought to take as account, we can't make a decision in a work.
No, no.
This is something we need to be thinking about and.
Yes, and we could even talk about it more at our budget meeting too, because at a budget meeting, because we would have a whole quorum if we put it on the agenda, then we could. Um, cause it would be something we would have to, we should, we'd just like to put something a little more than at the bottom of our forms. Stating we are going to do this, you know, it could be turned over to collections.
So Mayor, they are, would Bonneville be buying the debt and collecting it, or are they just gonna collect it on behalf, cause if they're buying the debt. You do it at a percentage, and then you're out from under it.
Yeah, no, they, they.
So they're just collecting on behalf of, our fee?
Yeah, so I think they keep that percentage and then we get so much as well, but then the whole.
Cause that might be a good question, too, cause if you can get a divided debt at seventy-five, eighty percent. Then that, they actually get a bigger collection on there, and they collect it and you're out from under it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a couple of things, you know, I, I've never thought of that idea, but at some point. There has to be enough teeth in this, that their water is actually shut off, so that, and.
Yeah, they do shut it off, and then usually what happens, people come in and they pay some.
Well, without just paying a partial payment, they either bring it current. It's brought current, so that just needs to be rewritten or something.
Mhm, yeah.
So.
Yeah, from what I heard, stand, if it's like a thousand dollars, then you take the thirty-three percent, it would be like three hundred dollars. Then they, then now all of a sudden, instead of them owing us a thousand, they owe Bonneville a thousand three hundred and thirty-three, Bonneville keeps their three hundred and thirty-three, and we still get our thousand. But that's a good thing, we could ask about that with that, but anyway, just a, just a thought, like I said, we can't make any motions or anything here in work meeting, but we could. Talk about this more.
So what's the biggest debt, what, what's the, what's the hardest thing to collect on, would you say? It's just our sewer, right, that's, that's the only thing we have.
I guess the biggest debt that we have is homes that are not being lived in right now, but their bill is still.
But it's always, well, that's the only thing we have, is sewer, yeah.
It's very garbage.
The only thing that can't be turned off.
Yeah, yeah, we can't turn off sewer.
Do we lean those properties?
I don't think so.
That was one thing, I remember someone telling me, if they owned a business, that eventually they owned. A house because they owed them so much money and.
Yeah, you could lean that, a property or anything, so.
Okay, okay, this is next thing.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of, of taking a real close look at that, I think that, that helps the staff relieve a lot of their pressure, I mean. I think I could be on board with that, I think that might be good.
Okay. Okay, okay, um, another thing too, or did either of you have anything before I, I had a couple. Okay, so.
I was just asking, when are we discussing the rest again?
The last Thursday in April, so.
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth, and then May, in May, we're approving and adopting. So April's kind of our last. Look at it, unless we schedule an additional one, but.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so Taylor applied, we, it was through Wasatch Front Regional Council, so Taylor is the, um, engineer with J U B. And applied for a grant that Wasatch Front Regional Council was giving out, it's for, it could be a hundred thousand dollars. And we were actually awarded this grant, and it is to cover Hooper zoning ordinances and design standards. And when they came in and talked about this, they said it would be a grant that you could use, so if we wanted to come up with any kind of design standards for. Com- a commercial development or any of our ordinances that had to do with zoning that we're trying to go through and get. Figured out, and Hooper was one of the cities that was awarded that. Our portion then is ten thousand, so we were awarded the hundred thousand, we have to pay the ten thousand. And then they would pay the additional ninety thousand dollars. There is, and so this is something, again, we, I just wanted to have you be aware of this, we can talk about it at our budget meeting. Because, um, then we'll talk about it and see as far as budget, if we. Again, you know, that's a small percentage, and I think some of these things would be really good for us to have.
Would you tell me the name of the award again?
Mhm, well, it was for, it's for, through, was through Wasatch Front Regional Council, and it says Hooper zoning ordinance and design standards. So it was something to kinda help us, I know with like our general plan, every year you're supposed to go through and kinda say, have these things changed? What things could we do differently, and there's, you know, a couple of ways we can do this. There's a planner with like J U B, Wasatch Front Regional Council. There's a planner with like J U B, Wasatch Front Regional Council has people that can help with this. That Mike Hudson Group reached out to us and said, we understand you're awarded this money, and I don't remember the other cities. I was at a Wasatch Front Regional Council meeting last Thursday, and they announced that Hooper had been awarded this money. So, I think that would be-
I, I've got a question, so-
Sure.
With our design standards, is there a way to sneak in our, um, upgrades on our impact fees? Could that be part of it?
Okay, okay, that, that's really, I'm glad you brought that up, because Taylor said yes. He's, so, um, Taylor, who's staffer, who's with J U B, is going to be here to our meeting on May first, and there's, he's doing on roads, sewer, storm drain, and parks, because we have not done any valuation on those impact fees for, yeah, maybe since the beginning of the city. He said each one of those studies are about a hundred thousand dollars apiece, but he said, so that's four hundred thousand, which is a lot of money, but in the long run, we could maybe end up getting two million. But he did say that, Bryce, just what you said, that with this, they could probably incorporate some of this grant. So, I mean, we're still going to have to pay for all of that other, but it would probably be less. So, I think that's something that we could work on and something we need to, because our park impact fees are behind currently. We don't have a sewer impact, we don't have the storm drains impact, nor do we have roads. So, that really is something that we do need to have, like I say, even though it costs money to do those studies, but in the long run, we will end up getting money. So, okay, um, and again, these are just things, just so you're aware of, and we talk more about at our budget meeting. So, um, Planning Commission has asked if L R B could come and do a presentation or be at their next, next Thursday at their Planning Commission ma- meeting to answer questions for them. When he was here, he said yes, that they would come, they will come, but there is a cost to, for them to come. So, they build it in before, and just so everyone's aware, Stuart already knows, and their check is on their way to us to reimburse us. The total for L R B was thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and a one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars of that was for them to come to City Council and do the meeting presentation. So, it's not that they're, he would be willing to come to Planning Commission, and we had a couple of Planning Commission members that reached out and asked if they could come, and I said, we need to probably ask City Council if this is something that you are all right with spending fourteen hundred dollars to have them come, because this won't be covered by Stuart or the Terrastrata Group, because this was not included in on the bid. This is just something Hooper City is, this is additional, that we are asking them to do.
So Stuart's check that's on the way, is that the, the total? Thirteen thousand something?
Thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty. But, but see, when they originally did it, they only ever said they would be coming one time. So, for us to add in for them to come another time, L R B, and Malcolm's the one, Malcolm, excuse Malcolm too, he's not here tonight, but he's been working back and forth, and the last email they said yes, would be willing to come at an additional cost. And then Malcolm said, okay, how much is that going to be? He didn't answer, but then, you know, Morgan, that's so efficient, pulled up their bill, and that's what they charged us to come to City Council, was fourteen hundred and sixty dollars.
So, did Stuart pay that or not pay that?
Stuart paid that to come to City Council, but, but we can't ask Stuart to pay to have him come additional time, because that wasn't ever part of the agreement. Anyway, what, Bryce?
I was saying, because we did ask him when he came if, if he'd give, and he said he made himself available. I guess fourteen hundred bucks is, is available. He kind of indicated that he would just come do it, but it sounds like he's had a little change of heart, but that's okay.
So, so we need to know whether to put it on the agenda or not. If, if City Council is fine paying that, then we will confirm with him to come. If you're not, then, we just kind of need to know your feelings on that, you know, that's, if we are willing to pay that additional amount to have him come, or, and, and maybe we could, you know, Malcolm, he, he didn't get any response from him today, other than yes, there will be an additional cost. Malcolm said, what's that cost going to be? They didn't answer back, and so now, you know, um, we want to get that, the agenda out today for Planning Commission meeting, but Morgan will come in tomorrow to send that out. We just don't know whether to list them or not, if you're okay to do that or not.
That's, that's gotta be tomorrow?
But that, that's, that's quite a bit of money, yeah, that's why I'm leaving it up to what you think.
What if, uh, you know, they just reviewed that planning, or excuse me, the City Council meeting where they did come, if there was any additional questions that they wanted to ask? They email him, um, and have him answer through an email? I, I, I don't know, I'm a little-
That, that, that's a great idea, that's a great idea, Bryce. So, what if they did, if they just went back and listened to that meeting? If they have any additional questions for them to email for clarification? Is that something?
Was all that recorded? Was L R B, I guess it'd all be on a-
It's all recorded. Well, so is that the direction you'd like me to give? I, I think that sounds good.
You don't think Stuart would pay half that?
Well, it, the original bid was-
Fourteen thousand something, right?
No, it was more like eight. It already went more than what the-
Oh, I thought he, he, I thought he was aware it would be about fourteen thousand.
Well, yeah, he, he was aware, but that's more than what their original bid was they gave us. Well, we, we can let-
What if, what if, here's, here's another option, I mean, if, obviously that's a pretty high price, I think, but, um, I guess they're a lot smarter than us. What if you hit him back and say, hey, we'll give you five hundred bucks if you come out? I mean, basically they have our, our, uh, accounts come out to me, that's basically what we're paying for, paying them. I mean, that's another thought I don't want anybody else thinking, but I, I know I want to shortly change the Planning Commission, um, but I, I think fourteen hundred bucks will speak.
Well, I, I think, you know, Malcolm can reach back out and say, I think probably not put them on the agenda, and then if there's questions or we can ask, and Malcolm can maybe reach out to them first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, anyway, we need to-
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, okay.
And we can always add it on if we give a decent price for them.
Yeah. Okay, okay, well, thank you, we're gonna move up.
If you fire that deck over, I'll go for two hundred. Just fire that deck over, I'll go through that, I'll go through that.
How are we?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we are. We have citizen comments at the beginning, Grant, so when we do that, then we'll work.
You're not charging us fourteen hundred when I retire.
Well, which of them, well? I, I told Morgan on the, uh, flash drive I was scared of that.
This is public address, they're all online.
Online?
But you can leave in four weeks.
I'll leave.
It's like Lexington, right?
That's on the very, very west end of the world.
Yeah, that's more like Lexington, right?
Yeah.
In progress. We would like to welcome everyone to our City Council meeting. It is Thursday, April third, and we appreciate you being here. We would like to excuse Ryan Hale, who's not here with us tonight, and we have Council member Marigoni and Will Cox are on Zoom, so they will be listening. And also, our City Planner Malcolm Jenkins is out of town. With that then, I will go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead you through that, and then Council member Fowers will do the reverence. If everyone will please stand.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we're always grateful to come before thee. We're grateful unto thee for the many blessings that thou hast provided for us throughout our lives. We're grateful to be able to come before thee in a meeting such as this, a City Council meeting, and we always pray that thy influences can be upon us to help us in having a good, good discussion and listening to those promptings that might enable us and help us to make good choices and that we might be able to express ourselves in such a way that it will be understood. Grateful for this area that we live in, grateful for the freedoms that we have here that allow us to become the very best we can. Again, thank thee for thy spirit, which we hope will accompany us here tonight, and as we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
So, just a few upcoming events, you'll see if you have a copy of your agenda. The spring cleanup is going to be on Saturday, April twelfth, here in this building, here in the parking lot, from eight o'clock until one o'clock. We will have a newsletter that'll be going out next week, that will show you things that are permitted for you to come and dump, and those things that are not. And, oh good, Morgan's helping prepare that, there you can see. April eighteenth, we have two hunts. This year we're doing the nighttime teenager hunt, is going to be on Friday night at nine o'clock. If there's anyone that wants to come and help with our Easter egg hunt this year, before we even get to this, on the eighth and the fifteenth, we're going to be filling eggs here in the civic center at six o'clock. So, if any of you can come and help, fill eggs would be great. And then the day of the hunt, so the night of the hunt is here, teenagers bring their flashlights. If you've never came and watched, it's really a fun thing to see. And so if you want to come help put out the candy and help be a, a gate guarder to make sure the kids stay where they are till they can run onto the field at night, we're going to be putting out candy at eight o'clock. And then the next morning, at, on the nineteenth, which is a Saturday, at nine o'clock AM, they will be here. And there are the different ages, what, these are for ages one through twelve, and again, the newsletter, and on the sign, you probably saw coming in, and also on our website, you can see where the different age groups are going to be. And if you're interested in helping put out candy that morning, again, be here at eight o'clock. So, our next City Council meeting on the seventeenth is going to be canceled due to Utah League of Cities and Towns State Conference that they have every year down in St. George, that some of us are-
Oh, can I ask a question?
Uh-huh.
Why are we canceling it? Because I think most members are gonna be here.
What, well, because we had already arranged to cancel it because of the Utah League in Cities and Towns Conference that we are having. Morgan's going to be gone, Ryan's going to be out of town, I'm going to be going, and any of you could have signed up to go, and so that's the reason why we're canceling that meeting. On April-
Are we gonna hold it the next week?
Yes, we have a meeting on April the twenty-fourth, then it's going to be a budget meeting. So, if there was anything that we needed, like we talked in our work meeting, we needed to add on, we could at that time. Okay, um, so the first thing on our agenda tonight then is going to be public comments. So, if anyone has public comments, if you would like to come up, you can state your name, and you have three minutes for a public comment.
Good evening, Travis Bates, resident of Hooper. Um, I, I was glad to see the agenda come out, and I'm glad Ricky or the Honorable Ricky or, what is, the official title? It's Ricky. So, I'm glad to see Ricky come here and talk to the City Council about Weaver elections. So, Weaver does a great job on their social media, there's a ton of shout outs. I'm very proud of Weaver County's election cycle, that we don't make the news. Ricky gets invited on local news networks to talk about other counties. One concern I do have are the number of polling places in Weaver County, and I'm hoping Ricky talks a little bit about that tonight, and something that I would like cities to put pressure on the county for. Weaver County has about three hundred square miles of land. David, or excuse me, almost five hundred square miles. Davis County has about half of what we have. Uh, we have about a hundred thousand less residents. Davis County had fifteen, around fifteen in-person polling places the last election. Weaver had less than five. I think we had two? Two. So, five hundred square miles, two in-person voting. Now, I, I love the ease of voting on, I wish I could vote from my cellphone, but I have family members, and we all have family members that like to go punch the buttons and pull the dials, and I think that is an option that cities need to put more pressure on the county for, for in-person voting, without having to drive forty, fifty miles to get there, so, thank you, appreciate it. Ricky, looking forward to hearing, we've got to say bye. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm, I'm not a, actually a citizen of Hooper City. Moved out here however in nineteen fifty-five, and I've always been proud to say I was from Hooper. Until just recently, I've had a very bad experience with Hooper City, and I'm here to complain today. I'll start with last August, about the middle of August, I was in a three-day meeting in Salt Lake with the Health Department. I came home to find four inches of water flowing across my front yard, water seeping into my basement, which is eighteen inches below grade level, because my neighbor had turned the irrigation water on and left it on for four days. My choices at that time was to mop up the water the best I could. I also called him and I told him I didn't appreciate it, asking how much money he had. But then I got thinking, to be the good citizen, I need to solve that problem. So, I proposed that I put in a drain on the east and the north side of my property, which abuts the Parker property. And, and using my money, put a drain in, which would catch that wastewater from the irrigation and dump it into the drainage a little quicker. There's already a culvert there that I helped pay for. So, I proposed that, I talked to an excavator, he gave me a price, and I said, let's go ahead. First, we gotta go get a permit, which is my first mistake, trying to get a permit. Uh, in fact, the engineer from West Point City told me I should have just not gone ahead and done it. I talked to Jared, and he come over, he's a neighbor of mine, he came over and looked at the property. There's a culvert fifty feet north of my property that I helped pay for, that goes accro- that goes across the road to the west and then back to the south inside Davis County. I live in Davis County. So I just thought, this drain would get that water. I was gonna hook my drain into that same culvert and just more speedily get that water into the drainage, which can help me and help the irrigation people. So I proposed that. I come up, Jared said it looked good. He came and saw it, told me to send the excavator up to get a permit. I did. And when he comes to Hooper City, they said, no, you can't do that. They didn't tell him why, they didn't tell anybody. Said, I don't even know who he talked to. So I guess he went a couple of days in the room, trying to get the permit. Never did get it, called me about it. I came up to Hooper City. I was not able to talk to anybody except the girls in the front office. I was told that Taylor Stoffer, who I did not know, could talk to me. Jared couldn't talk to me. They said, nobody was there to talk to. I came back probably four or five different times to Hooper City to talk to why I couldn't get a permit to just put the drainage water, or the wastewater into the drainage quicker. Well, this went on. I finally got hold of Taylor Stoffer, who wrote me, who actually seemed quite amenable to what I was doing because Jared did, he thought it was a very workable solution. And we're only going to put the drain in about a foot to a foot and a half below the surface, just to catch irrigation wastewater and get it into a drainage. The drainage goes south into Davis County. Well, Taylor, if you look there, there's a memorandum from Taylor that mentions Hooper City does not typically allow private land drain connections directly into the storm drain system. Now, drainage is apparently became storm drains, which they've always been storm drains, but they're also, they were originally built to drain waste irrigation water. Is that not right, Dave? Hooper wouldn't exist if you didn't have drain ditches as a farm. You couldn't farm it. The original pioneers dug a canal, they brought irrigation water, they leveled the land, they put drain ditches in to take the wastewater away. If you don't, you can't farm it. I don't understand why water that's already going to go to the drainage can't go into my land drain and then go into the drainage. I don't understand that. That there is no rhyme or reason to that reasoning. If somebody can tell me that, a good one, I would just love to hear. I was told to go to West Point.
And your time is up? But I'll give you like three more seconds, if that's all right?
I'm gonna take a little more time than that because I have been three months trying to talk with Hooper City. And I told myself I wasn't going to be angry, but I'm getting that way really quickly. Because this is the same nonsense that's happened all along. I couldn't talk to anybody. Anyway, they took, Taylor Stoffer said, go to West Point City. You live in West Point. So I did. I talked to the engineer there. And he came out. We got a meeting between he and I and Stoffer. And they couldn't understand why. We came to an agreement that if I would agree to let them disconnect that when they develop their property to the north of me, that they could give me the go-ahead. Stoffer was going to write that agreement up. The next thing I know, I got another memorandum from Taylor Stoffer, which is on the next page there, that again says, no, Hooper City can't allow that. I still don't understand it. I think you guys need to think about that. Where does waste irrigation water go? Can somebody answer that for me? I've got water coming across my front yard. What am I supposed to do with it? No answer? Dave?
Yeah, you know, of course, that isn't your water. It shouldn't be your problem, right? It's the person who is...
Yeah, and I'm spending my money to solve the problem. That makes it even more infuriating.
You what?
Is your microphone on?
There you go.
Okay. But it's, I'm...
Well...
The water is going to Davis County either way, into the drainage either way. Why that's not allowed, I just don't understand. I think you, I got a lot more here, because this has happened to me about five or six times. And I think Hooper City needs to look at that ordinance. That is a ridiculous ordinance, that you can't get rid of waste irrigation water. Because what do you do with it? Do you just wait till it dries up, and then you have to move out? Nobody here has a good answer, do you?
Well, I know what our ordinance says. I, you know, we've had a couple of conversations, and I did address them. So maybe that's something as a council, then we need to look at that a little.
I'm just saying, that's what I'm here for. Somebody needs to get some common sense into that ordinance because there needs to be somewhere to put that water. And drainage is just rebuilt to take drink water, wastewater.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments?
Oh, I do have one other comment. If I could, I think you really need to look at finding somebody besides Taylor Stoffer. He was very rude. He was dishonest. In my dealing with him all along, the engineer and the planner from West Point City at the meeting, I shouldn't say this, but I will, said, Hooper City's got problems. And I can see from my dealing with you guys, that you do have problems. You need to solve that problem. Thank you.
Any other public comments that anyone has? Okay, the next thing on our agenda then is the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look through the minutes? There is only one correction that I saw, and it's just a name correction. And it is on page number four, where it says Ben Warwood, and his name is actually Dan Warwood. Did any of you notice any other corrections? Anybody online have any corrections? Okay, if that's the only correction then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2025. Okay, the motion was made by council member Northrup. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second was made by council member Fowers. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so the first thing we have then, under discussion items, reports. We have Ricky Hatch here with us from Weber County Elections. It has a presentation for us. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ricky Hatch from Weber County, County Clerk Auditor, and happy to talk and happy to work with Morgan. Morgan does a great job working with us. And she's gonna do a great job forwarding the slides tonight, which I'll be really enjoying probably.
Four people's job.
Yeah, that's right. Just really quickly on the, on the voting locations and having them. Weber County, in 2012, we had 62 voting locations throughout the county. That was when 90% of, well, probably 80, 85% of all voters voted in person. The past several years, it's been about 2% of voters who voted in person. So if you look at 2% of Hooper's voters, which I believe you have a little over 5,000 registered voters, and turnout for municipal elections tends to be less than 50%, you're looking at about 100 people who would, who would take advantage of an in-person voting location. I'm not saying that it's impossible or that you shouldn't request something like that, but just to put a little perspective to that. And we will always, always have in-person voting options available for, for the citizens of Weber County. We currently have two vote centers that we use. One is up in the Monden Valley because of weather and concerns when we're driving through the, through the canyons. And then the other one is at the fairgrounds for the large elections. Or for smaller elections, it's at the county offices in downtown Monden. Okay, let's talk about turnout. Go ahead. We've had, looking from 1984 to 2011, voter turnout in Utah dropped, or sorry, in Weber County, dropped by 54%. And go ahead and click on the next one. That meant that in 2011, one vote, one person's vote counted for 50 other people who either couldn't be, they couldn't vote because they were too young, under 18, or they chose not to vote. Let's go to the next slide. Now, let's look at voter turnout trends over the past, from 2002 to 2024. This is for primary elections. If you take a look, 2014 was the low point, 2020, which had, the G stands for the open governor's race. That's when Governor Herbert stepped down. So you had Governor Cox and Brett Hughes and, and others that were running with quite a high turnout, 62% in the primary. Let's do the next slide. In general elections, the P stands for presidential elections. So there's always a spike in turnout for presidential elections. But this is the average between 2002 and 2024. Now, let's look at municipal elections on the next slide. Municipal elections, you can see, is quite a bit lower. Back in 2011, it was 21% in person, or total votes cast as a percentage, sorry, total turnout, going up to as high as 40%. Next slide. So I put all of these three graphs together and just asked the question, what, and the red line is, accounts for 2015, when you see all of the increases in each type of election. And the question is, what made voter participation increase? Go on and click again. That's when we first implemented vote by mail. Now, we had a special election in 2013 for vote by mail. We weren't ready to implement it county-wide in 2014, but in 2015 was when we, we started implementing that. This isn't a commercial for vote by mail. We should always have options for our voters. And with the recent legislative session that changed some issues around vote by mail, we'll talk about that a little bit. It's just looking at the impact of, of vote by mail. Okay, let's go to the next slide. I'll, I'll go through these pretty fast because I don't want to keep you here till 10:00. We're going to talk about election integrity in Utah. And there are four pillars. These are the four pillars on which election integrity rests for Utah, the main functions of that. Go ahead and click on the next button. The first three of these are audited, and we'll talk about audits just a teen bit later in the presentation. Next, please. The first one deals with voter records. It's important that we have clean voter records. And in Utah, the Lieutenant Governor's Office owns the programming for the voter registration database. The clerks own the data. So Lieutenant Governor's Office doesn't touch the data. We don't touch the program. That's a separation of powers to help ensure consistency. Lieutenant Governor's Office also audits the county clerk's management of the data of the voter registrations. Next slide. As far as verification, before a voter can even be registered to vote, they must provide either a Utah driver's license or a state ID card or a valid social security number. Before we register them, we verify either their driver's license number, state ID, or social security with the, with the appropriate agencies. And if we can't verify it, we don't register that voter. They don't receive the ballot. And we reach out to voter to get additional information. Next slide. We maintain our voter lists. We're very careful to maintain those. These are the five different ways that we keep a really close tab to make sure that our voter rolls are clean. As an example, in 2013, when we had our first vote by mail election, we mailed out approximately 100,000 ballots. 20,000 of those came back to us as undeliverable. Our voter rolls were not very clean in 2013. Compress that with 2024, just last year, 1.9% came back as, as undeliverable. Next slide. And this is audited, again, by Lieutenant Governor's Office. And it's done throughout the year. And we don't know what records they're auditing or when they're auditing. And they provide us with quarterly reports. Next slide. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about ballot envelope security. Next slide. First off, when we're processing to make sure that the ballot that we've received back from a voter should be counted, that envelope remains sealed during the entire process. And there's no personal information or party information on the outside of that. And we do that on purpose. We don't want that to influence our decision in any way in determining whether to count somebody's vote or not. Next slide. Go ahead and push it down. Oh, we missed, we're missing a couple of images. That's okay. On each ballot envelope, there's a barcode. And that is a unique control number that is generated by the system. And it's specific to both the voter and the election, but also to the specific ballot. In other words, if you go to the next slide, there used to be a picture of a dog eating a ballot. But there's not. And sometimes you lose your ballot, or it gets damaged, or something like that. And you need to request a new ballot. That's not a problem. We're fine with that. On the next slide, we'll talk about some of the controls related to that. And there was an image on there. That's really funny. The barcode, that barcode and that control number, they have to be inactivated before we can even send out a new ballot. So if you call and said, hey, I'll get my ballot, and then we send you a new one. And then you called back and said, I lost my ballot, and we send you a new one. You could do that 100 times, and you could return every one of those ballots in a different drop box, and you can try to come vote in person as well. Only one of those votes is going to get through. And that's the control that we have in relation to that. Next slide. We'll talk about the equipment that is not pictured here. The sorter takes the envelopes, takes, scans the control number and verifies that the voter hasn't already tried to vote, that it's a legitimate, valid control number for that election. And then it takes a picture of the voter's signature. Next slide. For signature verification, we, we compare up to five signatures on file. And if we challenge that, it goes through two additional layers of review before we notify the voter and tell them that their voter, their signature's been challenged. And the voter then has two weeks to correct that. Next slide. And this is audit. We audit the signature verification process while it's being done to make sure that the equipment is functioning properly and that the individuals are being properly trained. Next slide. Let's talk just briefly about chain of custody. We have intense chain of custody processes and requirements when we process our ballots. And if, we have certain reconciliation points throughout the process, and if we're one ballot off, everything stops and we research. Now, that's, that's interesting because we process, you know, over 100,000 ballots in, in a large election. But we really do care about every single ballot. Make sure that no additional ballots, unauthorized ballots are introduced and no valid ballots are removed. Next slide. This is an odd picture of our scanner that we scan the ballots of. Next slide. Let's go to the next slide, please. As far as security measures, the, these machines are certified after extensive testing. They're never connected to the internet. There's no modem, Wi-Fi, or Bluetooth. All the software updates are logged and done manually. We have security seals on the equipment, five security seals per machine. And we conduct hash audits. And any activity on that machine is logged and tracked. And this is audited. Next slide. These are all audited as well. Audited before the election as well as before, after the, all the ballots have been counted by the, where the election is certified. And these machines were just recently the subject of a legislative audit that was done. They brought out technical cyber hackers to see if they could hack into these machines. That report will come out on April 15th at the, at the legislature. Happy to tell you in a sneak preview of that, they agreed with the fact that these machines could not be hacked. And they tried. I watched them try, and they were very good. but they could not get in. Next slide. The last pillar is voter responsibility. We are all responsible to protect our own ballots. You can do that by making sure your address is current with the driver's license division and at vote dot utah dot gov. You can track the status of your ballots. It's at no cost, you go to ballottracks dot utah dot gov, you enter your information, and we will send you a text, an email, or a phone call, or all three, when we mail you your ballot, when we've received your ballot back in our office, and when your ballot has been counted. There's also a free service by the post office that actually sends you an email each morning that tells you, and shows you images of all the mail pieces you're receiving that day. That's a great way to know when your ballots are going to be arriving. And you just go to the postal service website, and you can sign up for that, that's pretty cool. And if you get a ballot for somebody else that doesn't live at your house, or no longer lives there, give our office a call, and we can, we can take care of that. Next slide. Audits, we audit, we have tons of audits, I think every election, just in Weber County alone, we go through nine or ten different types of audits throughout the election process, the ballot processing. These are always done in full view of the public, both before, during, and after. Next slide. Now, let's talk about the exciting stuff. New laws, there was a few elections-related bills, actually sixty-three of them this year. These are the major changes that I wanted to talk about. First off, Utah used to be a postmark-plus state. This has been changed now that we are what's called a ballot-enhanced state, meaning that your vote will only count if it is in the county clerk's office or in a certified dropbox by eight PM on election night. It used to be that if you mailed it before election day, before the deadline, and it came in, and it took, took a week to get in, we can still count it, but that is no longer the case. We have to count it as of election night. Okay, let's see if this next.
Is there any military overseas?
No, military overseas have federal protections that give them up to thirteen days after election day. So, okay, it did come through, very good. Here's the other complication of, from these new laws. First off, in the left column, talks about voter's choice. So, right now, we mail ballots out to all active registered voters. Before twenty twenty-nine, that will not change at all. We will continue to mail them out to all active registered voters. However, voters will begin making a choice on how they want to receive their ballot. You'll do it when you go to the driver's license division to get or renew your driver's license. You'll get it when you, if you go to vote in person, the poll worker will ask you, do you want to receive your ballot by mail, or not receive it, and then come vote in person? And then you can also make that request, you'll have to make that choice if you update or register online with your voter registration. So before twenty twenty-nine, nothing will happen, except you'll be given questions to, to, to see how you want to cast your ballot. After January one of twenty twenty-nine, if the voter hasn't made, made that actual choice, we will no longer mail them a ballot, they will have to come and vote in person. At which point, we'll ask them again, do you want your ballot by mail, or do you want to continue to vote in person? The voter makes that choice, and that's, that's what they will do. Voters will have to remake this decision at a minimum once every eight years, that's how frequently you have to update your driver's license. And so, you will, as part of that, you will have to make that opt, make that choice at least once every eight years. If you do not vote in two even-year general elections, two November even-year elections, we will also stop mailing you a ballot. And, but you can always, as the voters can, they can always opt back in to receiving their ballot by mail. The next column on the right deals with your ID number and signature, starting this year. On the back of the envelope, you'll have a place for your signature, and you will also have a place to write down your last four digits of your driver's license number or your state ID. If you don't have one of those, you can put your social security number. If you don't do that, before twenty twenty-nine, if you, you don't have to put them on there at all, if you don't want to. If you don't put them on there, we will check your signature and validate it that way. If you do put them on there, we will validate it through those last four digits. After twenty twenty-nine, you must include the last four. That will become the primary method of identifying that the voter is who they say they are, that that ballot belongs to that voter. So you'll have to include those. If you don't provide a number, you have to provide a photograph, photocopy of your voter ID, sorry, of acceptable ID, so that would be a photograph of your state ID, or other acceptable ID that's spelled out in the statute. And we will no longer validate signatures after twenty twenty-nine. They'll still be there because that, you're signing an affidavit, but we will no longer validate it. The last four will be the primary and the only method of validation for those. Any questions about that part? We're almost done here.
I, I have a question about signatures.
Yes.
Sorry. As people grow older, I've noticed my mother's signature has declined quite bad. I mean, she, she really signs her signature bad. So what, what do you do in cases like that where people's signatures get so bad from one year to the next?
That's an excellent question. We keep up to five signatures per voter on file, and as people age, and we, we can tell that, that they have aged, we, you know, we know the age of the voter, we then will capture that older signature. There are still commonalities, all of our signature reviewers are required to take forensic signature training, and so they, they have ways that they can identify that even if it's wavy or wiggly, that it still has similar characteristics. However, as folks get older, or if they have a disability, they can actually mark a box on their voter registration form, or they can call us and say, hey, I, I broke my arm, or I have some kind of condition where I don't sign very well, and state law allows us to accept that information, and then we can make accommodations for the alternative ways that voter can verify that they return that ballot. So they, they do have options to help make sure that their vote stays secure, but that it's not too burdensome for them to, for, for them to get their ballot counted.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Next slide.
Hey Ricky, can I ask you one quick question?
I'm just going to tell you, do you want to come up, Travis, or the people listening won't be able to hear.
I'm standing, I don't have a cold, so you're okay, you're all right. It's kind of like horny game shows.
Right. So, when we're tying in now the use of social security numbers, I know some voter information's public, or can be accessed, is that accessible with my name as well? If I put my social security number on there with my name, I don't care who has my name, but is it tied in with that, and can that be accessed by anybody?
That's a really good question. The, first off, the law also requires that ballots cover the, the location where you provide that information. Weber County already covers that, there are a couple counties that don't cover that, that are now going to have to cover that. But that is not publicly available information, that's only available to us internally. That's why, as we worked with the legislature, we said, let's do driver's license or state ID, because the last four of that, it's not as risky to have that be visible to others. And that's why that is, those are listed first as the primary option. Now, about ninety-seven percent of all citizens, or of all voters in Utah, have a driver's license or state ID. So there's just, we're hoping that it's just the three percent of folks who don't have that, that will provide their social security. Good question. Lastly, if you have questions about elections, go to reliable sources, weberelections.gov, vote dot utah dot gov. Generally, if there's a dot gov, you can, you can trust it a lot more. There are great sites that aren't got dot gov, but it's good to be wise in your consumption of information, just make sure you're vetting any allegations or questions, or anything like that. And you're always welcome to contact us, this on the next slide is our contact information. You can email us, go to our website, you can call us, we are always available, and we're happy to be administrators for Hooper City's elections this year, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? And even though we're small in numbers tonight, we have a lot of residents that do go on and listen to our meetings, so know that the information will be more widespread than just what it appears tonight.
Fantastic, yeah, happy to answer questions anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, and is he online? Can we see? Okay. We have Seth Overson, who is the manager of the local government's division at the Utah State Auditor's Office. I had asked him if he would come and explain some things as far as the state procurement code, so we will go ahead and turn the time to you, and we really appreciate you joining with us tonight.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Awesome. So periodically, periodically, as the manager of the local government division, we have questions from different municipalities, special service districts, counties, and they'll, they'll ask the questions with respects to purchasing, or, or things, financial things in general. With respects to Hooper City, we, our office receives some, some complaints, we run the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and if our special projects team receives something from that, they will go in and do things. A while back, a year or so ago, Tyson in our office had a, had a complaint with Hooper City, and they looked at some, some professional services, and the recommendation at that time was, hey, there's, there's not a contract on file for these professional services. And our office's recommendation was to do a, a request for proposal, or a request for qualifications for those professional services, and then establish a contract, and, and have those professional services hired by a contract. My understanding is that one of those was with, were your sewer system, which was, was going to be exempted because of a sole source issue, because of the engineering firm that was provided with, and there were some questions with, just looking through your, your past minutes in Hooper City with legal services. It is, you know, municipalities are subject to the Utah procurement code, and each municipality should have a, a purchasing policy or procurement policy in place that provides those thresholds for the dollar amounts where a bid becomes necessary. And that, that would be the question there is, any of those services that are being provided, if the total sum of those professional services cross that threshold where a bid would be required, it should be bid out. For instance, when you're dealing with accounting services, for, for instance, for your external auditors, the recommendation is to have that bid out every four years. It doesn't mean that you have to change the service provider. In that time, you can bid it out, and the same, the same professional service people can bid, can, they can put in their hat in the ring again, and the city council can award that to that same person again. And if it's for professional services, you can take into consideration their experience with the entity and, and other considerations, but the recommendation there is that you should bid those services out periodically. On our website, we recommend every four years, so that each new council person that comes in gets a chance to vote on those contracts sometime during their term. I hope that answers some of the questions, but I'd also like to, to answer any questions that, that the council or the mayor may have, so.
Okay, questions for your thing, a recommendation or a requirement?
So, as far as having a contract in place, it's a requirement.
Right.
You should have a contract for those. As far as, or bidding them out, the, the city is required to follow their, that threshold that they have placed for those professional services. So I, I looked before the meeting to try to find Hooper City's purchasing policy, to be able to look up what that, that threshold is. Municipalities have that, that little bit of leeway in there. You gets to set, hey, over a certain amount, we need to have a PO, and over another amount, we have to request a certain number of bids, and whether they're sale bids or not, you gets to set out what those rules are, but once you have set what those rules are, you're required to follow them.
Right.
It's a requirement to follow the rules, but you do have a little bit of leeway, because you get to set those rules. It's very bad practice to, to suspend those rules for a specific procurement. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you should be able to follow those rules unless you're in an emergency situation where you have to make a, a decision quickly.
Okay, so with, with these different things that we work with, it's a, it's a recommendation that we do it every four years, but we could go longer.
You could go longer. Sometimes there will be a contract that will be issued, and as part of the terms of that initial contract, it will say, we have the ability to extend this out for, you know, a period or two, and, and you can specify in that contract what that period is. At the end of that period of time, you would go through and do that, you would go through the procurement process again.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
I believe Seth, in our ordinance, it actually is five thousand dollars. Anything over five thousand dollars requires city council approval. Whether that is the same as the procurement code, I'm not sure as far as our ordinances, but that's the only amount I could find. You know, if it's under five hundred dollars, it could just be something made by staff, five hundred to five thousand is something that could be made by the mayor. Anything over five thousand generally is sent out for bid. Any other questions from council? Okay, I guess, you know, the reason why, I appreciate you coming, because the question had come up about our legal services, because currently, we have been using the same legal services under a resolution that was dated the third day of May two thousand and one. And I think what first brought this to our attention was, as you mentioned, there was that complaint, or whatever the question turned in, did, we did not have a current contract. So I thought, based on that, that we needed to do an RFP where we could put it out for bid for legal services, because it had been twenty, almost twenty-four years since we had done that. And that was some clarification I wanted with city council, because that was, made known that they did not want to do an RFP, they just wanted to have our current legal council sign a contract without doing an RFP.
And based on the dollar amounts at play, I, I quickly just pulled up for, for those legal services in transparent Utah, the transaction history for Hooper City. In twenty twenty-four, depending on, on the name of that, but my understanding is that Mr. Richards is the attorney that, that is, is used currently by the city. And I see approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four that was paid out to, to, to one entity, and then, and then one listed as individual. If, if those are the dollar amounts for those, for the contracts that are at play, or the amounts that are being paid, it really should be competitively bid out. There's, it's not a sole source thing. Retaining legal service is not something that could be justified under the sole source procurement, it should be bid out. And as, again, as I said before, it may end up being that, that the city continues to retain those services, but it provides the opportunity for other people to, to put their hat in the ring, and will say, hey, please consider us for this service. It allows you to be able to con, consider what other law firms are putting out as their, their rates. Maybe you go through the procurement process, and you find out, you know what, we're getting a killer deal, and they're giving us a great rate. Or you may find out that their rates are not competitive. But that's why that, the best use of public funds is the goal for the city council. The administrative rule for the state, when it comes to, when it comes to procurement, has a standard in there that says it's, it's the reasonable person standard, which means it's an objective test to determine if a reasonably prudent person who exercises an average degree of care, skill, or judgment would be justified in drawing the same conclusions under the same circumstances, or having the knowledge of the same facts. It would be very difficult for, to, to pass that reasonable person standard without going through that bidding process in a reasonable period of time. And in this case, at least for these services, twenty less years is, it should be bid out more often than that, to make sure that the pricing is correct, and that the city is receiving the best use of their public funds as they're retaining those services, so.
That's understandable. The number that you gave us, it's very interesting, because the budget that we just received said that we paid a little over forty thousand. and that was double what we've paid in the past years, which has been around $19,000 to $20,000. So the sixty, sixty whatever thousand dollars just kind of blew my mind because that's nothing that we've even been, that's nothing mentioned to us at all. So.
And my, my search, looking up thing, I know the last name of the person that's provided, and that's what I searched on. And I'd be happy to go through with how I came up with those numbers. I've, I've got on an Excel spreadsheet that I could, could pull within. It's, it's all available on transparentutah.gov if any citizen wants to look up. We have a pretty robust way of looking up vendors and seeing how much any entity in the state is paying to an individual vendor. So.
We just felt we had a pretty good deal because they had never changed their rate. So we thought that was quite fair, you know, per hour. So thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
That certainly is something, Debbie, you can look through the accounts payable. I know as we sign each month, I know it is, it is comparable to this. I can tell you as we sign those checks every month, it, it is, I would say, around there, $67,000 or even maybe a little more from the checks that we're signing monthly. But you would be welcome, Debbie, to come in at any time and look at the accounts payable with the invoices that we are paying.
Yeah, it's, it's just weird that there's that much of a difference from all of our past years. You know, staying around $20,000 and then jumping to that amount, just, I, it's almost unfathomable.
Any other questions from city council?
Well, Seth, you say that's a recommendation, right? It's recommended?
To, to put something out to bid?
Yeah, I, I would, I would do so. I missed part of it, but.
So based off of the city's, based off of the city's purchasing policy that that should be bid out if it's over $5,000, and we're, you know, in, in 2025, which the year's not completed yet, you've already spent $12,000 of, according to 2025, from the data that's available, and it was closer to, you know, $67,000 for 2024. The dollars at play are clearly over the threshold that that should be bid out. And that reasonable person standard would say that it should be bid out more often. So the, the timing of how often the city should make the practice of bidding those contracts out in the future is a recommendation. We would recommend once every four years, when you're looking at those professional service contracts. You could have an extension of the contract on there. Where we're currently at as far as does the city needs to do the request for proposals or a request for qualifications and enter into a contract with something for legal services, that would not be a recommendation. You're required to do that by state code, and it's been long enough since it was put in place that you need to do it now. That's, that's, you know, as the mayor has talked to the council about this, she's kind of being the mouthpiece for the state auditors because that's who we've worked with. But the city really does need to go through the process, follow state procurement code, do the procurement process, and enter into a contract. That's not a recommendation. That's a requirement that, that the city council needs to do. Then going forward, you can set how often that is going to be relooked at, and those contracts are going to be revisited. We would recommend at that point to do it once every four years. But as far as the current situation, what needs to be handled, it, it needs to be taken care of by the city.
So I have a question. Our policy in our purchasing ordinance for legal services is that we bid for services over $25,000 and not the $5,000 that was mentioned. And since we have not spent over that amount, we have not been concerned at all. This anomaly of the $67,000 is something that has come from out of nowhere this year, and I'm going to ask for an itemization of that because I want to know what, what this was spent on. So.
Twenty twenty-three, it was $37,000. So for both of those years, the last two completed years, the city has crossed that $25,000 threshold. And they don't have the, your policy in front of me, but if, if the threshold is $25,000, both in 2023 and 2024.
And, and, and we can, we can, we can do that. I'll just have to get an itemization of this $67,000 since it's an anomaly for our city to be using that much. So anyways, I appreciate the information that you're giving us and helping us be aware of what's going on out there and bringing us, bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from city council?
Seth, excuse me, I, I guess we've kind of reinstated the Richards for the legal services at this time. That was a whole big situation. Are we able to just retain them still right now or do we immediately start the bid out?
Well, here's, here's, here's my take on that. We already motioned as a city council, and it was unanimous, to retain Brandon and Reed and to retract the RFP because we did have a contract and that was a, that was valid. So I, I don't know, Seth, if you're interpreting law or not, but I would like to really see, but, you know, really, if this is exactly what we have to do, I, I don't know, but we can't. Since I think that was unanimous vote, hang on a second, since that was unanimous vote, we can't tonight with, you know, a member of our city council not here, we can't retract one of our, our votes that was unanimous. So I, I don't know what you're asking us to do. It can't be accomplished tonight.
Well, and, and I'm not telling you, you have to take action on something tonight. Typically, on this one, I would tell you, because I'm not an attorney, I would tell you that you should seek legal counsel. But since this is over your legal counsel, and they would be a, a party of, of the contract, I, I can't really tell you, hey, seek the person, seek legal counsel from the people that you've been receiving it from because this is their contract. So in the, in the grand scheme of things, I would say yes. You need to go through the procurement process, and, and you may end up in the exact same place, but following the process as it's spelled out in your procurement code, putting it out for, for an RFP, minimum of a week, or you can leave it out for longer than that. You would be in limbo for a couple of weeks. You could come back in your next city council meeting, readdress it, and then it will have been done with the proper, proper timing, proper channels. And it's one of the things that we sacrifice in government is transparency and we sacrifice expediency or the speed of getting those transactions for the sake of, of showing that we have gone through the right, the right process to make sure that it's done. And I think that's one of the things that Hooper City should look at is, are we going through the right process here? Yet, it might take us a week or two, well, longer, to get us back into the, into the seat of things. Hopefully, those, those people that are performing those services will continue to help out the city in the meantime and say, look, this is just, this is the process that we have to take. We're going to put out this RFP. We want to go through the process, make sure that it's done right. At the end of the day, you may end up in the same place, but that way, every, all the citizens will be able to look at it and say, yes, the city council has followed the process. And that is our job as oversight agencies to make sure that you, you go through that process. And we'll, we'll continue to watch and, and monitor that as you go through this process and get things taken care of.
So I think you just answered that, what, what Councilman Northridge's question was, that our prior, our attorneys we have now can continue to act until we get the RFP finished and awarded. Isn't that, if I understand that correctly, our current attorneys can continue, and then we get our RFP out, and like you said, a minimum of one week, probably two, that they can if they're willing to continue until we get this RFP completed.
I'm, I'm curious, well, and we haven't done that for engineering as, as well as our CPA firm.
You should have done it for your CPA firm as well. My understanding is,
Well, undoubtedly.
Is that the engineer, for engineering services, that if the city has documented that there is a compelling reason why, why it should be. I, I know that we've had conversations with the engineering services for the vacuum sewer system that the city has, that they looked at that and said, this is a very niche thing, that, that there's only one firm. And when we were discussed, when we were consulted about that, the office's stance is, if there is a compelling reason why you're going to limit that and not put something out, the city really needs to document why they, they need that exception for a sole source issue and why it's not going to be bid out. In the case of legal services or accounting services, there's really no reason why you would have a, a sole source issue. Accounting services should be bid out too. If you take a look at that and you see that, that your CPA firm is, is running off a very old and it's, you know, contract from years ago, that should be looked at again, and that should be bid out as well. For cities, it's not a specific requirement. For school districts, those must be bid out so often. If there's only, if there's less than three bids, they're required to send it to the state auditor's office, and we will put it out to the entire CPA community so that there's a more robust bidding process for that. So. And if cities have that problem, you can send it us too, and we would send it out to all those CPA firms so that you have a good competitive bid process.
Our CPA, we can go ahead and look at their contract, but this is a different one. This isn't the same one we have always had. The CPA firm we have now is different than the one, and I don't know if it's been less than four years, but we can certainly look into that. I know we used to have a different CPA firm than we currently have.
Well, if we decide to go ahead, we might as well do both of them at the same time.
Yeah, we would need to look and make sure what our contract is with our CPA. I'm, I'm not sure on that. We will have to look that up. I know it's been within, I would suppose, maybe three years. I, I'm not certain on that, Debbie, but we can look up what our contract is with the CPA. Any other questions that anyone has? Councilmember Fowers, did you have any questions for him?
No, I, I don't believe so. I, there's a little, a little, it's a little concerning to me that we didn't target our legal counsel. That's what it kind of looks like. And, you know, what, what would it really take to have an audit of our city to make sure, if we want to be compliant with everything, whether it be our contractors or those who provide any type of service that we have a contract with, what would it take to have a state audit of our, our city, the whole city, to make sure that we are doing everything like we should instead of just pulling out our legal counsel?
So there is not one audit designed in scope to go through every single thing that, that you could possibly mess up on. When we get involved, it's usually because of, of citizen complaint, and we will go and we'll look at that. When we give the recommendation that you should have contracts in place for those services and review those contracts periodically to, to renew those and make sure that they're bid out properly, that recommendation is not for one service provider. It's for all of them. Legal, engineering, any of those services you have. And that, you know, as far as doing an audit of that, it, I think that's something you guys can do in-house. You can direct your, your staff to say, hey, pull all of our contracts. Let's get a timing on those with when do they expire and when are we getting those renewed. And that's something that can be done by your staff. If you have a specific concern, every year when you have your external audit, with your external auditors, they should be doing a entrance conference with, with the city council and the mayor. And if you have specific concerns, be it over contracts or, or any other, you know, issue where there'd be state compliance involved, you can ask them and say, hey, we're concerned about, you know, this issue or another issue, and ask them to take a deeper dive into those issues that you, as the governing body, have concerns about. And you can steer part of that audit. They're going to do the finance, the standard financial audit and the standard state compliance stuff, but if there's an issue that, that you want to, you can definitely and should steer that and say, hey, I have concern in this specific area. Can you take a deeper dive? And they can do that for you. And that's an annual audit you'll, you'll have in this fall. And, and you should talk to them and say, hey, if I have concerns over them, let them know, and they can take a look.
I don't, I don't mind transparency myself or adding audits or, or whatever. It's just suspicious to me the citizen complains about this specific thing. And that's all I'm going to say about that, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I think too, as, as you remember, we talked about in a city council meeting, and this was an email, Dell, that you would receive, Councilmember Fowers, on December 20th, 2023, that just says, Mayor Fowers, the Office of the Utah State Auditor operates an audit hotline. And at that time, I mean, I could read the whole thing, but it said, we received a complaint that Hooper is paying JUP engineers, Reed Richards, and Post-Ascot paving, but does not have contracts with these entities. So I think this is where this all originated. And then, as I mentioned before, the first I became involved was when we received, let's see, the first one I think that had my name on it was maybe in March. Because there was another one, January 31st, because this had gone to Morgan, and then, like I mentioned at that one meeting, we've been trying to go through all of our records, trying to find out if we did have contracts. And so that was when I realized that we did not, that we needed to get these in place. So I don't know if it's necessarily someone's, I, I don't know. That was, like I say, back.
Well, that was on the 20th of December.
2023.
Of 2023. So I left office after the end of the year. And then you were again notified in March of those, that same type of.
In January 31st of 2024, this was again correspondence with Morgan that she was trying to find this. And then again, March 20th, and we could not find. And, but at that time, they sent one out to all of us. And it shows here it went to all, all of the commission members and myself, again, from the auditor hotline regarding procurement, asking about this information that we were trying to find. And then again, in June 5th of 2024, again, this went to all of us, just saying again that they have not received. And like I mentioned, we've been working, trying to find. It was correspondence going back and forth with these entities, trying to find the required contracts.
Okay, so we've, we've been over that before, what you just read. And my concern was is that we went all last year and didn't do anything until the fall, you know, here. And then now all of a sudden, our legal counsel is the one that shows up again. So I'm just saying, that's my concern. And if we have, maybe to make sure we're right on track, maybe we ought to have a state committee audit our city to make sure that everything is in place. And as was mentioned, when we did our financial audit, I had some concerns about that. And I asked, actually listed them, the concerns I had, but yet there was nothing that was ever, nothing ever come of that. And so to me, that is just a concern I have. And just to make sure we're crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, maybe we need to, to do a more thorough audit other than just our legal counsel.
Yeah, and I think as you mentioned, would they do that every year with our, we have an independent audit?
Right, but that, that's the independent audit that I'm referring to, that I actually listed down the concerns I had. But anyway, that's, that's what I have to say about that. So.
Yeah, I think it's just a good place to start, and then you're right. If we, we can start, we can start going through our contracts, just making sure we always have everything done the way that it is supposed to be done. Any other questions that anyone has? Okay, well, thank you. We, we appreciate your time. We appreciate what your office does in giving us guidelines, and we will go forward from here and try to get all of our procurement process in, in order that it needs to be legal.
Thank you for the chance to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing then on our, on our agenda then was to do a discussion and a motion for the. a motion for the proposal to draft an RFP for legal services. And I know before we had one that we had received from Madison that was one from the state. I know that you had some questions and concerns concerning this RFP. Um, I went through and highlighted everywhere that it said, Mayor can send to the city council, um, in time when it said city council. I know there were some questions that you had. So I think then one thing we could do would be to at least entertain a motion if we are going to do an RFP, which I think you made it pretty clear legally that we need to do that, then we could send out, we could have Morgan send out this copy. All of you have already had a copy of this, that if you would like to see it again and maybe make suggestions and then if we, like I would think tonight, then it would just be a motion if we are going, the proposal to draft an RFP, then everyone would need to look through this and come up with an agreement as far as what everyone would like to see as far as in the RFP.
I would, I would like to see the itemization of the bill before we go forward. Um, I, 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 I understand, well, we may have to do this RFP, but I, I, I would motion that we table it. And, um, I would like to see the billing.
I, I can tell, and I think that's fine. You can come in and look at the billing, but I can tell you, we are paying more than 25,000 a year.
Oh, that's right, but I want to see the itemized billing of what we're being charged so much for.
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes sense because as we receive their bids and bids from others, we would probably want to, you know, compare that. So that makes sense to want to see that.
Take consideration their experience and time in the city. But I, I'd like to motion it, motion to table, um, the, just a minute, I gotta grab my thing. I'd like to motion that we table, um, a proposal to draft an RFP for legal services until our next meeting, which would be, um, which would be our regular meeting. I don't even know now.
That will be on May the first?
Till our May 1st meeting, 2025.
And we could have Kami bring to our next budget meeting, which is going to be on the 24th. She could bring and at, or at any given time, we could have Morgan put those together, but she could bring that for us on that budget and we could do that. And then if it is above the 25,000, then I think at our meeting then, we need to have on the agenda that we make the motion to draft an RFP for legal services because we would be about.
I, I'm making the motion that we, that we move to discuss further the RFP for the legal services. I think we need to have more discussion. I think we have to have some more transparency about what charges were incurred. I think there's a lot of questions about, about that before we, before we move forward with anything.
So was your original motion Debbie to table this until March, until, excuse me, May 1st, 2025?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So there has been a motion made by council member Marigoni to table a motion on drafting an RFP until the May 1st, 2025 meeting. Is there a second? If there's not a second, is there another motion?
I'd like to, well, I'd like to do on condition that we have the itemization for the attorneys to look at and have further discussion.
I, you know, I, I'm on board with that, Deborah, that I, I, I would really like legal counsel, something that doesn't have to be interpreted. Really interpret it, is it really a recommendation or, or, or is it a law? I mean, obviously Steph, um, he, he knows his roles and stuff, but it isn't really a law. Uh, cause I just think it's really unfair or just, I, I, I don't know what the word is that we're just doing this for our legal counsel. It's just really, this is to me. So I would like further discussion and clarification on state code and some, that knows that law, that is an attorney to give us recommendation before we would forward this.
I, I agree, Bruce.
If the auditor's office is telling us that we have to do things legally like this, then we don't have a choice. I understand the, um, discrepancy in numbers make us wonder what the difference is and why. However, I think if they, we do the RFP and we get the bid from them and we ask for the itemized things from them as well as whoever else bids out, I think that might answer a lot of our questions and as well as we can come in and check the numbers, I guess, here in office. I'm not sure.
Maybe, maybe can we just table this for discussion till our next meeting, May 1st?
Did you make the motion Debbie to second?
Yeah. Make a motion that we just, we just take this and table it to discuss it further at our next meeting on May 1st, 2025.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a second made by, the motion made by council member Marigoni, the second made by council member Will Cox. Any discussion on this motion?
I just, um, just want to clarify. Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, again, it's tabled until May 1st for further discussion. Okay.
But at the time, if we will have already had a budget meeting by then, we will already know the amount over 25,000. So is there any reason why at that time, if we find that we are over our 25,000, that we couldn't have a discussion and a motion? All we're saying is we're going to draft an RFP. Would there be any reason why at that time then, if we find out we're over the 25 and so it is required, as he said, it wasn't a recommendation, it was a requirement by state.
No, he, he said it was, he said that he was recommending the four-year thing.
Recommending a four-year fee, but the four years, but requirement that we do an RFP because we have not had any contract since the one that was dated May 3rd of 2001. So in almost 24 years, we haven't put this out to bid, we haven't done an RFP, we have had nothing other than this resolution that was passed. That's the part he said that he is, that we, we are required to do, recommended. And at that time you do your RFP. If you want to say, we will look at this every four years, every six years, he mentioned he always, he recommends every four years, just like he did with this, even with the CPA and he made that statement because you have city council members that change, you have a mayor that could change. So that is the recommended part, but it is required to do the RFP.
Okay, well, this will be a good time to have another discussion about it. So, so making a, the motion to further discuss this at our next meeting will be good. And at that time, I just want to make sure that we have access to the fully itemized billing for the 67,000 for all of us to see. I think that's transparent and I think that's a good way to go.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion?
Well, a- after that discussion, I just want to make sure of the motion one more time. And that is that we're tabling it until May 1st for further discussion.
I am recommending, no, that we have it be a discussion and a motion because by then we will know if we're over the $25,000. And if we are over the 25,000, then we are required to do an RFP. So if we, if we, at our 25th meeting, we find we're over the $25,000, then what would be the reason to only have a discussion on May 1st? Because then we're putting it off then to May 15th before we ever motion that. So I.
We can, we can discuss things further. I think it's better to discuss things, make sure we're doing it the right way, and then we can make the motion at the next meeting. I, that's what I've motioned and I believe it was seconded.
Any other discussion then? And just because it says motion on the agenda, you don't have to do a motion. We sometimes have that on there and we haven't made motions.
We went?
I said, I'm sorry, I did. I, I said, even if it says discussion and a motion, if at the end of the discussion it is decided to not motion, we do not have to have a motion. But if you don't have a motion on there, then you, you cannot do a motion. That's how it works with our agendas.
I, I guess what I'm saying is it's, it's changing, it's changing my motion. I, I, I made one and that, that was what I meant when I said it and I, I expected it to stand as I said. So that's, that's all I was thinking is I just wasn't expecting it to be changed.
So currently the action item reads, discussion, motion, proposal to draft RFP for legal services. So you are saying you want to table this action item, correct? So action item A is discussion, motion, proposal to draft RFP for legal services. So you're saying you want to table action item A. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, so you are tabling action item A, which is discussion, motion, proposal to draft RFP for legal services. Bryce, is that what you are seconding?
That's what I'm saying.
No, no.
Yeah, then this, it's, yes, I, for, for discussion, because I, I still have some other questions, some legal questions that I would, I would like answered.
And those will be discussed.
And so, yeah, I think, I think you were changing Deborah's motion a little bit. So, but I, I motioned what Debbie, or seconded what Debbie motioned. I want further discussion. I have some questions that I want answered.
Okay, so, so again, the action item is discussion, motion.
I think it's what we're trying to figure out is when we meet again and we discuss, can we go ahead and take the action at that time to get the RFP going and not just leave it out for another couple of weeks until the next meeting to do it? So just so we can get.
Brown rolling, ready go.
I think, no, but, I mean, if, if they know we're, we're working towards resolving this, which, which we are, uh, to come in compliance or whatever, then, then what's the rush? What's another, uh, another meeting? Cause we are, we, we want to do the right thing. Um, but I don't think there needs to be a huge rush, you know, if we do it in May, uh, the second, second, uh, council meeting in May, great, we could discuss it the first meeting. And then if we in fact need to, then we can go ahead and do it in the, the second meeting in May.
Any other discussion?
I just want to discuss it further.
Noted. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor to table action item A? Say aye.
Okay, well, I was just going to clarify that again, table it for further discussion.
Yes, because it was a discussion and a motion. And if we discuss it and there's no reason, if everyone's concerned that we put a motion, then we can wait and do it and even have him come back again and say, yes, Harper City, you are required to do this if we need to. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bryce, you, you weren't opposing, were you?
No, I, I was in favor.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the next thing we have on our action items.
Can we skip down to D real quick? Yes, I'm going to make a motion that we skip down to action item D for the purpose of time and that, that people are here in this meeting today.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Northrup to move action item D on the approval of the commercial license up to next. Is there a second to change that?
I'll second that.
Okay, that was seconded by council member Fowers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are going to go ahead and do that. So now we are going to have a discussion, motion, proposal, excuse me, motion approval of commercial business license for Elena Winter, homegrown farm mat preschool. Is there a presentation on that we'll have from our city recorder?
Okay, just a little one. So they had initially used permit for a daycare preschool for their home. And it was passed on March 13th. Um, the conditions that were placed on that is that we needed to receive an exemption letter from the, um, childcare bureau. Um, and then also follow state and local code requirements. And we've received everything. We've also received background checks from her and as well as her employee, I think. Um, as far as coming to you guys, it's, she's filing for a commercial business license. You guys approved her to my commercial business licenses, so that's where we're at now, so.
Would you like to come up, do you have anything to say? And just go ahead and state your name. Thank you for being here and being so patient with me.
Yes, thank you guys for motioning to move us forward. It's her bedtime, so. Um, I'm Elena Winter and I'm a citizen of Auburn. And what was the question?
Do you just have anything you would like to present to the city council before we make the motion to approve or do you know?
Um, yes, I don't, I think it was Morgan. Yes, I think I emailed you. Um, originally I was going to have a license exemption, but I actually have a different license. It fell under, the one that I emailed to you. So I'm falling under, um, an in-home, uh, registered in-home care center is what it falls under. So, and if I should have everything and my employee is in the process, I'll email that to you.
So I got a chance to look up your cute website. Um, cause I'm like, I want to see what this little protocol is about, because it sounds fun. Um, just curious, I'm supposing that insurance wise and everything's good with the animals and all the things, the activities that will be going on?
Yeah, I had to get, uh, so I had to get a few different bids for insurance policies and it was, um, most of them would have, we're trying to do two separate, like a equine policy and a business liability policy. But, um, I found, um, an insurance provider and I'm blanking out on the name of it right now, but, um, they were able to bundle it for me and so we're just going to get that one started for the activity for the seventh.
Except those are hard to do, so.
Yeah, it was expensive.
Okay, so I, I just have a question. I remember this commission meeting, um, you mentioning that you would get an exemption on a license that doesn't require state certification. Is that what you've, is that what you've now changed to where you will have state certification and there will not be an exemption for that?
Sort of. It's very confusing, their licensing requirements. Um, but so I tech, if I, originally I was going to have 12 students per class, but if I cap it at eight, then I can fall under in a home childcare provider. So it's the CCP, it's, I, it's in the email and I can, but so it's not, I don't have the same requirements as a license, like a commercial daycare license. I don't have to follow those, um, rules, but I, I had to just submit an application and submit my business information and, um, I'm, it's a, I'm a registered, I'm registered with the state now as an in-home childcare provider. So they can do things like random checks on your facility and things like that, but it's just a little bit, it's in between basically. The unlicensed, the licensed, licensed exempt and the licensed.
So, so there's something in, in between those two, you say?
I guess I'm still unlicensed, but I'm, I'm a registered in-home childcare provider. It's, it's a different certificate that they have.
Okay, so.
Yeah, she's.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's good. I, we've contacted the lady at the Bureau of Childcare. She's also explained that that's what she needs. So as far as state licensing, we're good. If you want me to forward that license from her, we can, we can try that. But as far as staff is aware, she's got her, it's everything she needs, all the requirements, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for her? Okay, thank you. So with that then, I would entertain a motion at the approval of the commercial business license for Elena Winter.
Well, I would make the motion that we approve the commercial business license for Elena Wilter, Winter, called Homegrown Farm Ant Preschool.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the second was made by Councilmember Northrup. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda then will be the discussion motion on the H.L. Parker Legacy Subdivision Developer Agreement Extension Request, located approximately at 5900 South, 5900 West. Do you have a presentation for us?
Yep, just to go over the timeline. So the original developer's agreement was issued in April of 2021. They came back in April of '24 to request a one-year extension, which was granted. And now they're coming before us this year to grant, or to request another year of extension. He went to Planning Commission last month. And then Planning Commission recommended just to do a six-month extension through, I guess this year's October 15th, irrigation time. So they recommend to approve that six-month extension, but not the full year.
Do you have any questions? Does city council have any questions on this?
I think they need it. I've noticed some little bodies gathered around talking over in that area lately. The subdivision itself still slopes so far off the main road. There's going to be some major drainage issues and things like that. So that's probably why they need this extension, is to get some of those problems filled, because it's a very large difference in level.
I know they've been working pretty consistently with both Jared, our Public Works Director, and Malcolm, our city planner, as far as getting these things worked out. And I, they asked him at the time when he was here, if six months would be long enough. And he said yes. And the Planning Commission felt, well, they, they extended it for six months. That was the recommendation to city council. Any other questions by city council?
Well, I think, even if they went a year, I mean, they're, they're going to be in the winter time. So I think the six month is a good choice.
I, I do too.
Okay, any other discussion? Or is there someone that would like to make a motion on this?
I'd make the motion that we extend the H.L. Parker Legacy Subdivision until October 15th, 2025.
The motion was made by Councilmember Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Can I just ask Morgan real quick? Can you, just, just to make sure, because things got kind of scattered and stuff, can you read back my motion to me? Or is there any way you can do that? Because I make sure it's, it's correct.
Yes, let me find it in here.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I had your first motion to table proposal to draft an RFP for legal services and had more discussion and received itemized billing for the May 1st meeting. And then that motion was dead, so we created another motion to table, to discuss it further on May 1st, 2025. And then Bryce seconded. And then I think everyone was good on that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we were going to have a discussion and a motion proposed by the Western Weaver CTC. And they had some family issues and were not able to come tonight. So we are moving them to, also to our May 1st meeting. So the only other thing we have tonight then is a discussion of motion to, a proposal to draft an ordinance for no motorized vehicles on city-owned property. And we had quite a long discussion on that in our work meeting. I think city council, and we had a really good presentation by Lieutenant Slater. Is there any discussion from city council on whether you would like to draft this or not?
I just, I missed out on the work meeting, but just from somebody in my district, this was a message to have been trying to let them know that we were getting signage ready and some different things. But the dirt bikes, I want you to discuss dirt bikes on the trail, motocross tracks are highly regulated and should not be in neighborhoods, noise ordinances, and next to a natural protected waterway that feeds into our great subway. It's scarring, it is scarring away, oh, excuse me, yeah, scarring the land and scaring the fowl. One really laid their spring eggs in the grasses and natural flora, but now it's a racetrack. The four to six hours may be through Friday, 12 or more hours on Saturdays and be easily heard inside our homes. Kids speed in the streets, the bike trails and poppies are both for long distances and chase people actually off the bike trail. Some kids are even bullied. It's disturbing and frustrating. It's a purposeful bike walking path. They aren't going to block up the path, are they? So she was worried that by putting the signs up, the path would be closed. And I said, no, just like the trespass signs. And it's like, do you know what they're going to do at Restoration Project then? Where the motocross track has been going, is maybe behind my house, is ruin the banks of the Howard Slough. There's a handful of neighbors that have called sheriff's offices, city department of natural resources, environmental quality, and Weaver State, Weaver County's commission and water resources. We've met with little to no hope so far and I hope we can get this resolved. Can't there be a section area that's just, like, start a restoration, like they do with the natural parks? And that's just one of many. So I know I missed the work meeting about it, but I just thought I'd let her, her words be heard.
One thing we did talk about in work meeting, just for clarification to everyone, we did receive notification from the state. We are going to be knocking that down and doing preservation on it. Because it is now a state issue, we have to get a permit from the state in order to allow us to do that. We're hoping to have that done by the first part of next week. And then we will go about replanting some of those natural grasses, because they are, it is controlled by the state. So is there someone that would like to make a motion on the proposal to draft an ordinance for no motorized vehicles? I'll make the motion. Rose, I'm sorry.
Hey, during the meeting.
Would you pick it? Oh, yes.
So during the meeting, I did a little more homework. There is actually a state law that does allow e-bikes on a trail. So under the provision there now, it is there that would allow an e-bike. And I think so, maybe just some clarification of the motorized vehicle portion of the city ordinance. So just an update from the work meeting till now.
Like dirt bikes for, or just those kinds of?
Yeah, I mean, it says, the signs say no motorized vehicles, which there's some intent of the sign versus, right? And so did some homework while we were in the meeting. Found that e-bikes are allowed, so I don't know that we have the same issue that I kind of presented in the work meeting. Still think it makes sense to clarify through ordinance what the motor vehicles are. And just amend or add to the city ordinance, so.
Do you recommend then, you know, how I had read off that portion of our newsletter? Then do you recommend then we need to remove that, you know, the way that it was worded? I don't think it's specific, it said assisted bike. So it was the, this is what was going out in our newsletter next week. Mechanically aided propulsion, including motorcycles, scooters, assisted bikes, go-karts for rollers. So should we remove assisted bikes from that wording for our newsletter?
Hang on, let me pull up some language.
I guess we could always have it more, you know, more specific as far as e-bikes than that. As long as it's not less restrictive than the state has it. Because I still have those same concerns. I think sometimes with an e-bike, you can get going a lot faster, easier. And so people do that.
So the state statutes 416A, 1115.5, talks about electric assisted bicycles. And subsection two of that code, it does say, an individual may operate an electric assisted bicycle on a path or trail designated for the use of a bicycle. So essentially, the city could, I, I'm not an attorney, but that's where probably with the assistance of some legal counsel, the city can navigate through it. So I just wanted to update that when I was talking about motorized vehicles pertaining to an ATV and motorcycle and the bicycle, I did a little homework, just because I knew there was something else. I found it, but, yeah. So there is a state law that does address them to be on the path. But if the city wanted to put some regulations in there, that's definitely, I think, within their purview to do so. And I also think it's still inside of the park, right? As we talked, kind of that global, getting some language drafted for appropriate use of parks, trails, and incorporating the motor vehicle aspect into those things. I know we've had some complaints of people riding motorcycles in the park, which is definitely not acceptable. But just clarify a few things. So that was my only update from the work session till now. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, there is a state law. And it, it gets into talking about classifications of bicycles. So, yeah, there's, it's, there's some more language, I think, for further discussion, for sure.
Well, I guess we could then make the motion to draft an ordinance and then we could work with our legal counsel as far as what they would recommend with doing that. And I could reach out to them tomorrow to see about our newsletter, if we should, you know, if they would want us to take those words off.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Or is there someone that would like to make the motion, if it's a proposal to draft an ordinance?
You know, in looking at this motion as it's written, I, I'm good with that motion. I mean, I could make it. And then what we would have to define then, what a motorized vehicle entails. Because motorized can be electric or gas, right? So, but if you want, I can make a motion with that, make the motion just like it's written. And then we just may have to have legal counsel or get with them on defining what a motorized vehicle is. So I would make a motion to propose, a motion to propose to draft an ordinance for no motorized vehicles on city-owned property.
The motion was made by Councilmember Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by Councilmember Northrup. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's, that is everything on our agenda for the night. Could we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Fowers, seconded by Councilmember Northrup. All in favor? Aye. We have now adjourned, thank you.
Double, double aye.
Double aye.